Well, welcome everyone. Part of our agenda today is appointing board seats. So Amy, if you wouldn't mind just kicking off the meeting and then we can get to that.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order at eleven thirty. We'll call our board members. Amy Tate.
Tim Berry.
Sarah Mudge.
Hal Edwards.
Adam Fridge.
Great. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
No.
So we need an approval of the minutes from December fourth.
So moved.
A second.
Okay. I think, correct, the three of us are alternates voting too?
No.
No, we have so.
Who are, remind us who's.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I guess who's the alternate.
Adam Fridge and Hal Edwards are our alternate.
That's what I thought. Okay, great. So yes, you're voting.
Okay. All right, well, that works.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we don't have any old business, new business. Welcome new board alternate members. It's nice to have some backups. We haven't had that in a while, so that's great. And then we need to elect officers. We do a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary.
Would you continue? You wanted to continue as chair?
I was continuing to you.
I would prefer to nominate you.
We have to like rush and go for it or something?
Yeah, exactly.
Sure. I think that's fine. I mean, we have to vote on it, but what about you? Okay?
That sounds great.
Okay. Who would like to be vice chair?
I'll do this.
Okay. And then Sarah, would you mind serving as secretary?
I'd be happy to.
And I guess what that entails is you don't have to take notes. They still take notes, but officially. What does that entail? I feel like that I was that at some point, but I don't think I did anything.
You know, historically, your staff serves as your reporting secretary. So I guess in the absence of the ability for staff to serve in that capacity.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the previously mentioned slate of officers.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, so next up is our file twenty-four forty-four for Meadows Drive. Do I need to read the statement or do you just staff present first?
Yeah, so we did provide a script. We did that with planning commission and we think it worked really well, so if the chair wouldn't mind reading the opening script.
Okay, the Lake.
And I do have a physical copy too, if you need it.
Oh, that might be better. At one point I ruined my screen and so it's not as dark, or it's too dark. Okay, great. The Lake County Board of Adjustment will now conduct a public hearing. This statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Board of Adjustment has jurisdiction to conduct a public hearing on a zoning variance application under section three point two one point four of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the zoning variance application should be approved. In considering that matter, the Board of Adjustment will address the approval criteria set forth in section three point two one point five of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be as follows. One, members of the board will disclose any ex parte communications. Two, county staff will make an initial presentation. Three, the applicant may then make their presentation. Four, after that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. I don't think we have a big enough crowd that we need to limit to a number of minutes at this point. Supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. The applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence if someone has already made the point that you wish to make simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the board and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the board will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then, there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the public hearing. The chair of the Board of Adjustment will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of the following recommendations. Approve the application with no conditions. Approve the application with recommended conditions. Approve the application with newly defined, newly identified conditions or deny the application. The planning director shall make a record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record. The board's decision will be in the form of a finding of fact. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the board or to the form of substance of these proceedings? Okay, hearing done, I will now ask each Board of Adjustment member if you've had any ex parte communications to disclose it and if so, it's redundant. And if so, disclose them now.
I've had no ex parte communications concerning the application.
I have not.
I reached out to a resident asking about plowing and stuff, but we did not discuss the application.
Okay.
I've had no communication with the applicants. I have asked some clarifying questions of staff, but that's it.
I've had some conversations with the homeowners prior to my position to this board. We live in the same neighborhood, so at that time I was a concerned resident.
Okay.
Excuse me, just one minute before we go on. Is this a continuation of the prior hearing?
I think that's true. Is that true? We did have to renotice it, so we didn't set a date at that time, so I guess what would it be to find us? Okay, so there was not a continued to a date certain. There was not. Okay, so it is a continuation, but there's new evidence that's been brought forward.
But the evidence presented at the prior hearing is still pertinent?
Still relevant.
Okay.
No, thank you for asking that. Okay, I guess county staff may now make their initial or continued presentation.
Thank you. All right. Can I just share this down before, except I don't see it. So I actually don't need it. So as we just discussed, this is a continuation of the hearing from December fourth, twenty twenty-four. The board decided that we would give the applicants a little bit more time to present evidence to justify variance. And so just for those, for those new members, we'll just do a quick overview of what staff discussed in their first staff report. This is a variance request. It is a request for a ten-foot relief from the side setbacks. And staff through a zoning review determined that the pine yard subdivision plot, called out a plat note, that the building setback shall be twenty feet. And so we made the determination that that meant the building setback was twenty feet on all sides. And so the applicants to build their desired three-bedroom home are requesting that that ten-foot relief from the side setback. And initially, their argument was that the to, if they were granted this variance, that they could preserve some of the open meadow. There is a parcel to the east that is labeled as conservation development within the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. And so they thought that that was in line with the definition of conservation development. There are also wetlands that are near the parcel but not on the parcel. And so they wanted to stay kind of as far away from those wetlands as possible. So that was kind of the basis of the first argument. However, the board came back and wanted to see more, more planning specifically around the utilities for the septic system. And so the applicants did come back with their septic system design. They worked with Platt River Group LLC to finalize that design. And through the design report, the engineers, they found a high level of clay and rock in the soil. And so that is a very impermeable material. And you need a permeable material for the soil treatment area. And so that requires a mounded system. And also, a mounded system is required because of the high water table located on the lot. And through discussions with David Wilson, our former OWTS or environmental health specialist, he said that that was pretty unique to the subdivision. He hadn't, he hadn't worked with any permits that showed a high level of clay content in the soil. And so when this happens, a larger septic system or OWTS design is required. And so the engineer came back with a two-mounded septic system for soil treatment area. And really to meet all of the setbacks required for the septic system and the home, the applicants argue that the side setback variance is necessary to build their desired home. And while we didn't, while we weren't provided a design of smaller home and a smaller septic system to see if a home could be fit within the twenty-foot setbacks, David Wilson confirmed that it would have to be significantly smaller to fit within those setbacks just due to the orientation of the lot. And so that is really the new evidence that has been brought forward to staff. And I did want to make one additional note, just to reiterate this. There is added access to the lot, but there's not currently constructed access to the lot. It was previously a condition of approval that they approved that access, but we're going to look at that during a zoning review anyway. So we decided to kind of keep it, keep it within that and not add it as a condition of approval.
So the original, the desired square footage of the home is twenty-three hundred feet, right?
Correct.
So what would be, what, is there any further definition of what smaller would be?
No, that's, that's what we can quite determine. But just based on the size of the septic system. So David said if they were to come back with a smaller home, it would still need to be a two-mounded system.
With the same, the same dimensions?
Not exactly. It would be slightly smaller, but he said the soil treatment area would still have to be fairly significant.
Okay, and I have one clarification to. If anybody has had ex parte communication, are they still allowed to discuss and, you know, give opinions and that sort of thing?
I would say that it is up to, thinking in respect to Adam's communication with the applicant. They might want to minimize their, his particular discussion and involvement within it. He is of course not going to be a voting member today. But I think that you might suggest that we may want to think about just clarifying questions, but I think there has been an identification that perhaps there was a little bit of advocacy in it, but we allow you to define that in our statute of law. Sorry.
I just want to make sure. I haven't had that experience before, so. Okay. So next up, we can have the applicant make their presentation. I'm not sure if you have an additional one from last time or.
Nothing major. CC does a great job on explaining kind of the situation. We did kind of highlight some of the peculiarities. First of all, sorry, Gemma couldn't be here. She had to go away on work. And so it was unfortunate for us to be able to make the time. I happen to be on winter break, so I could make it during the day. So last time, I don't know if you saw me, I was attending from my classroom. But yeah, so she couldn't make it today. The other thing that she had mentioned was the peculiarities of the site had come up earlier. And wanted to quickly talk about that, the clay being a peculiarity with regard to the septic system. And then also the idea that we found, this is one of, I think the only, correct me if I'm wrong, subdivision that has less than two point five acre lots that has twenty-foot side setbacks. All setbacks in Lake County for lot sizes that are ours are ten-foot side setbacks and twenty-foot from the front. So this, that is peculiar to our location. And just doing a drive around, I did ask, I put in a request for information about what the current side setbacks are on a lot of the houses in our neighborhood. Most of them don't necessarily fall inside the twenty feet. A lot of them fall outside the twenty feet already. And so I'm looking at some of the prior ILCs and site surveys just to see, are we, are we out of whack with the rest of the community in that area? And it doesn't feel like we are. I don't have site surveys to share with you, but as driving around and looking and checking out the aerial maps and trying to see what I could find, it felt peculiar to be in that twenty-foot setback on the side.
What's your lot size?
Point four four, or point four one. Sorry.
Point three nine.
Point three nine. So significantly under the two point five acres that require the twenty-foot setbacks in the rest of Lake County in zoning areas. Like I said, any of the others within Lake County have that twenty-foot, ten-foot. And you know, when I was reading the plat, it's kind of ambiguous. It says twenty-foot setback. Something to that effect. It doesn't, which could have been indicated twenty-foot setbacks from the road and maintaining status quo with Lake County ten-foot setbacks from the side. So not stated twenty-foot setbacks from the side on the front. It says twenty-foot setback. On the original plat from nineteen sixty-something. It's a, it's kind of a deep dive into Lake County history with some of the plat stuff. So if you have any questions, I don't know if I can provide anything more, but happy to answer anything that you guys have.
I just want to clarify that that does predate, sorry.
Oh.
But it predates.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no idea.
So it would be in my estimation, assume that it's twenty feet all around as many other plots that were pre- or zoning. That's, that's what that entails.
Has the county implied the twenty-foot perimeter side setbacks to other lots in the subdivision?
I don't know if staff, I don't know if staff investigated that.
The ones I did look at, yes. I can't speak for all of them, so we don't have files for all of them still. But yeah, we would like to point out that this is, this is our determination, you know, and it is our determination moving forward. And so past, past reviews, you know, shouldn't influence this decision.
Okay, does anybody else have questions? Is there anybody online? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Sure.
I, the other thing, you know, it's like, it's a pretty modest home. I mean, we're not asking for a gigantic ten thousand square foot, inch-to-inch house. I don't know if that matters or not, but.
Okay. Anybody else have questions or anything for the applicants?
I don't necessarily have any. I appreciate everything in the application and scrutiny, I guess, from the December fourth meeting on, you know, what, what the influence or those, those peculiarities were. And it does seem that with that, you know, increasing regulations and whatnot on wastewater systems and your intent in the application to tuck the house a little farther out of the view shed seems well-intended. So I don't have any large concerns over the application. I guess I would ask fellow member Adam Fridge, sorry, Fridge. I am curious, like how, I mean, thinking about city or other subdivisions, from your experience in your neighborhood, do you think that that setback imposes on snow storage or other issues?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, okay, okay. Because that's really all that I can think of, any unforeseen things. And then I did add, had asked staff, you know, were there other variances or exceptions in the neighborhood, just, and not wanting to open up the box of, you know, all these other exceptions coming in. But your neighborhood is one pretty well-built out, I think.
Yeah, I think we, I tuned into the last meeting that we had and I think that you guys stated there were maybe five undeveloped properties, maybe six, somewhere in that area.
I did. I looked at the inventory. Yes, so they, that, that is what I found. What I will say is many of these systems are aged though. And so upon conveyance to a new buyer, this is going to be, you'll see replacements because typically with systems of this age and with this type of, it doesn't happen very often in this county in my experience, but with the clay and everything, they're going to have to update their systems upon sale. And so there will be, you know, depends on when people sell, but there will be replacements needed in the future. That this will become, in my estimation, an issue.
In this area, yeah.
Because these size lots, by modern standards, would not be developed to comply with septic regulations and they only get more restrictive. So I, while I see something in here that says it's not, it's not causing precedent, I, I feel that this may cause precedent in, especially in some of our other subdivisions that have the small lots. And so not to say that, you know, one way or the other, we should approve it or not, just saying this is going to become a thing. No longer am I in the real estate business recommending people buy one lot in Panarc. I'm recommending they buy two and I won't list lots unless there's one, unless there's two. I won't even list a single lot because of this potential future thing. I have a lot of listings, point four six and point three three. The point three threes especially. The point four sixes, you can still sort of get away with it because the soil out there is not clay. But the point three threes, I definitely lose a lot of listings that way and somebody else sells them, but it's going to be, it's going to be a thing.
And I didn't mention this in this hearing. I spoke about it in the last hearing, but yeah, today for new lots that utilize a well in septic, they need to be two and a half acres.
For one residence?
Panarc has the advantage of not having wells. They have a community well system. So that also kind of helps in that situation.
Yeah, and I guess I'd offer, I agree, this is going to be, we're going to see more and more of that. I'd offer that. I don't, I don't think that, the application isn't going to cause that. It's that, it's that nature of all of those subdivisions. And this is just the first of many that we might see triggered by that.
Regulation, those regulations.
One thing I should point out that was in the septic design report. They were kind of looking into why is there clay in the soil? And they were thinking maybe the clay was brought over the mountain range from Wardstitch historically. So there's the potential that it's not present in all lots in the subdivision.
Okay.
It could be very.
So it was backfill. Or something.
Yeah, because it's, it's very unusual for that to be present in this location.
Okay. That's a good thing. I think I did see that in there actually, so yeah, about Wardstitch.
I guess, I forgot one other thing. The neighbor on the, who owns the conservation development, he sent a letter, I believe, supporting the variance. And that's the direct neighbor to the east and direct neighbor to the west. Didn't send anything, but he obviously is within that ten-foot setback on that side. And the second neighbor to the west, I called him. He said he was going to send a letter. He didn't send it yet, but, so there is support among the direct neighbors that bought the property, so.
Did we receive that email? Yeah, it was an email and it said that they had no issue with the variance. So I should have forwarded that one, but I did not.
Were those owners with houses already on the lot or are they vacant landlords?
It's the property owner to the east, so I think it's a forty.
Yeah, it's like thirty-something, yeah.
Yeah, and that property owner is exploring a conservation development.
I was talking, the other ones in the subdivision that you were saying.
One has that cabin on it.
Okay.
Or cabin, what?
Yeah.
I don't know what to call it.
Yeah.
And then, and then the other one is not.
Gotcha, okay.
Oh, go ahead. Just, I don't, I wouldn't suspect, but again, are there old, like covenants in there or staff that have like fences allowed or anything like that which would cause some kind of black and white discrepancies between neighbor uses?
Not to my knowledge.
Of changing, okay.
But there's, yeah, there's no way to enforce the covenant either, right? Yeah, covenants just.
You have to have a group that is overseeing and maintaining those covenants.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
With the covenants or something.
Shouldn't, shouldn't mix the covenant, any covenant or the organization with the plat. The issue is the plat.
Not necessarily, no.
Thanks.
Okay, any more comments from the applicant or?
Is there anything else you need from us or questions you have?
Okay, well, I guess I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Sure. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we'll talk amongst ourselves, but of course, in the room, but for this part. Okay, I'm open to comment suggestions.
I'll go. I would first like to thank the applicant for working with county staff to bring forth this revised application. Thank you. I know it undoubtedly involved time and experience, but it was well worth it. I was concerned at the prior meeting about standards and how the county standards apply to the application with respect to special circumstances and the uniqueness. I am more than satisfied now that the application meets the standards in the Development Code and I will support the granting of variance.
I agree, yeah. I don't have any other questions or other concerns. Okay. Would you like to weigh in?
I agree too, after reviewing everything and listening to what's been said. I think it's reasonable to grant it.
Mess well three. Well, we'll, we'll let you off the hook this time. I too appreciate the extra information that has come about, especially with the septic. I, I think that apart from building a smaller house, it doesn't seem, you know, it seems that that still wouldn't make a difference on the size of the septic because it's only going from three bedrooms to two bedrooms. The square footage is not actually, it'll determine. The square footage is not actually, it'll determine this place on the lot, um, and how much it covers of the lot, but, um, not so much the size of the septic. Um, so I'm also, um, in favor of the, the variance. Okay.
You ready for a motion?
You're ready for a motion.
I move the Board of Adjustment to approve file number twenty-four dash forty-four, the request for a ten-foot relief from building side setback at one six eight Meadows Drive, Leadville, Colorado, eight oh four six one, with the following conditions. One, variance shall expire in three years from the date granted. If a building permit is not issued, two, all statements made in the application in the hearing shall be considered as conditions of approval unless they conflict with any other conditions of approval. And I also move that the board find that the approval criteria in section three point twenty-one point five of the development code have been met as evidenced in the staff reported. The staff report, which is a revised report dated two twenty-five twenty-five.
One second.
Okay. Um, any further discussion?
Nothing from me.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess that I'll entertain a motion to close, um, today's meeting.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Let's just leave.
Aye. All right. You get half an hour of your day back.